This regular meeting of the Detroit Lakes City Council is called to order. And at this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a couple of items to the agenda.
All right.
At this time, items nine G and nine H related to a couple of temporary liquor licenses for the J C's.
Okay. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda with the addition of nine G and nine H.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council wish to either add or remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held on February 11th, 2025, are before the council. Again, is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the council meeting agenda or minutes from the February 11th, 2025 council meeting. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to consider the requests from the Detroit Lakes J C's for the 2025 Water Carnival. And I see, I think Tyler is here, correct? Tyler, do you want to add anything to the requests that you've made to the city?
I was here too.
Oh, okay, I didn't see you. Hi. You guys want to say anything or no?
Why don't you come on up and tell us about the dates and so forth?
Well, hello, everybody. How are you?
Good.
So we've got the Water Carnival on the agenda here. It's going to be July 11th through the 20th. It looks a little bit different than it has been in the past years. We kind of got rid of some things that weren't doing so well financially and kind of added in what made sense. I'm not really quite sure if you have any questions. I'd be willing to answer those.
No, but we sure appreciate you doing it.
Yeah.
It's a great event for the city, so thank you very much. And I think all the requests are in order, are they not, Kelsey and Sean? Everything's in order?
Mayor correct.
So with that, if there's no questions for the admirals, I would entertain a motion to approve the various requests, permits, liquor licenses, et cetera, for the 2025 Water Carnival.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve all the requests from the Detroit Lakes J C's for the Water Carnival. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, thank you, and we look forward to a great Water Carnival.
Can't wait to bring it for you.
All right. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed vacation of the utility easements on lots 11 and 12 of Block 4, the Detroit Lakes North Industrial Park First Edition. And I would call on some of our city staff for an explanation of what we're doing here.
This is a request from Gooden Company to vacate the utility easements between lots 11 and 12 in the Detroit Lakes North Industrial Park for their new building. They'll be building across that area, so they need to have those utility easements vacated.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the vacation of the utility easements on lots 11 and 12 in the North Industrial Park? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion from the council.
Your Honor, the Community Development Company reviewed this at our meeting yesterday and recommend approval, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution vacating a portion of the utility easements on lots 11 and 12, Block 4, the rearrangement of Detroit Lakes North Industrial Park First Edition. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed vacation of all drainage easements on Lot 1, Block 1 of Highland Estates at 1321 Highland Drive. Larry, you want to explain that again?
Yes, the project at Highland Drive has changed, and the utility easements that were dedicated on the plat are no longer required. The easements or the drainage will be treated in different areas based on their land disturbance permit, and so the current easements that are dedicated in the plat are no longer required. So we would like to vacate those.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or wishes to make any comments regarding the vacation of all the drainage easements on Lot 1, Block 1 of Highland Estates? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, again, the Community Development Company reviewed this at our meeting yesterday, and we recommend approval, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution vacating all drainage easements on Lot 1, Block 1, Highland Estates. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to hear public comments on the Shorewood Drive street improvements and to introduce the discussion on the improvements I would call on city engineer John Pratt.
Mayor, council, as you indicated, we have a public hearing. We've got a proposed project for the entire length of Shorewood Drive, potentially scheduled here for the summer. So with any project that involves special assessments, we're required by state statute to hold a public hearing on the project. Part of that is obviously in response to the statute requirement, but we also want to make sure we're providing information to the adjacent properties, get some input, answer questions, hear concerns, things of that nature. So the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about the project background and some of the existing conditions, what we're proposing to do, and then, of course, the estimated costs, the cost distribution, and special assessments that are being proposed. And after the presentation, we'll have a chance for questions and comments. A little bit on the background, this project has actually been on the city's radar for a number of years. It was actually included as part of the street rehabilitation project that we finally completed last year, but that actually started several years ago. And for a host of different reasons, Shorewood Drive was dropped from the scope of that project. Some of it was budget-driven, some of it was driven by some uncertainty of what we needed to do out there. So any event, it was dropped, but of course, the road hasn't gotten in any better condition, so we're picking that back up. The council authorized a preliminary engineering report in the fall of '24. We approved that at the February city council meeting, and if the council authorizes the project to move ahead, we would continue the design over the course of the spring and ultimately construct the project in the summer of 2025. So quite simply, the project location is the entire length of Shorewood Drive, Long Bridge Road to Long Bridge Road. Does also include, the best I can term it, the spur road that goes around the tennis courts area, but it is the entire length of Shorewood Drive. Not going to spend a lot of time on existing conditions, but we did look at briefly the existing underground infrastructure, including the sewer and the water. Those, we believe, are in fair condition with remaining life, so we're not planning to address any underground utility needs at this time. The existing street's about a 28-foot wide rural section. The last improvement was actually made by Becker County before they turned the roadway back to the city, and that was made in about 2001. And from what I can gather, that also included a little bit of widening. They hung some shoulders along the edge of the existing roadway to try to widen that out a little bit. In a nutshell, the pavement, it varies in condition from end to end, but there are some areas that are very poor, other areas that are getting there, but pretty significant cracking. We've done some cores of the pavement, and it's starting to deteriorate really from the bottom up. So it's at a point that really we can't do anything with it in terms of typical maintenance sort of approaches that Public Works would do. There are a couple drainage issues along the corridor that we're aware of. We would try to address some of those. There's some erosion along the shoulder at the south end near the Long Bridge Heights neighborhood and things of that nature. So what we're planning to do is what's called a full-depth reclamation. Essentially, that's a process where we go in and grind the existing pavement surface along with some of the underlying gravel in aggregate. We blend that all together. Once that's done, we will trim that, regrade it, shape it, compact it, and then construct a new pavement section on top of that. Really ends up being a new roadway when it's done. We'll do some pavement markings. I anticipate we'll do edge line and center lines along this because it's got quite a bit of a lot of geometry to it, a lot of curves and things like that. One thought that we're proposing is actually tightening up the driving lanes a little bit. That tends to have a traffic calming effect when you snug those up. Usually, it's 12 feet. We looked at maybe bringing that down to 11 feet, which at least has the perception of a little bit more space for pedestrian activity on the shoulder areas. So we would also, as I indicated, address some of those localized drainage issues with some culverts and some minor grading. We have talked also about installing some curb and gutter basically between Bay Ridge Drive and Long Bridge Road and that area of Long Bridge along the north side of the roadway to address some shoulder erosion issues. Some other considerations, there was in the report some provisions to look at putting some parking in, in that area between Long Bridge Road and Bay Ridge Drive on the south entrance, if you will, to Shorewood Drive. We looked at moving the curb out that we're proposing a little bit to create a parking lane along the north side of that road. Another option would potentially be to push the center line of the road over further and then get a parking lane put in on the south side. All of that was really in response to the fact that we've posted that area as no parking. There was parking that was happening there during busy summer weekends. That was creating some issues with deterioration on the roadway, some safety issues, things like that. And so the idea was to look at, can we capture some parking back? This was discussed yesterday at Public Works, and I know there's probably a lot of people in the audience who want to talk about it, so I just wanted to address it now, that the recommendation coming out of Public Works is to not do any parking in this area. So the recommendation that's going to probably be put before the council is to just simply leave it as is. We will put the curb and gutter in on the one side, but we are not planning to make any accommodations for parking in this area. Couple other things that I wanted to address because I've taken some calls on this over the last year. One other place that we're looking at is putting some curb in at the, I guess it'd be the northern entrance to Shorewood Drive. That first sharp corner that gets clipped quite a bit, so the shoulder just sort of keeps getting wider and wider, and the edge of the pavement gets beat up pretty bad. So we may look at some curb and gutter there just to try to mitigate that from happening again. Had a fair amount of comments from people, again, over the last 12 to 18 months about everything ranging from, you know, can we put a trail in or a sidewalk in? Could we put curb and gutter throughout this thing? Can we widen the shoulders out? And ultimately, those are all things that are possible to do, I would say, but not real cost-effective to do within the scope of what we're proposing, which is really driven out of pavement rehabilitation type project. To do those sorts of things would exponentially increase the cost of the project, requires significantly more grading and more work, much easier to do if we were to do a full reconstruction or a full regrade of the street, or we're doing reconstruction of underground utilities and we sort of have the whole corridor ripped up. You know, when that time comes, I think these are much more viable options that we could look at, but we're not recommending doing any of those within the scope of the proposed project this next summer. So on to estimated costs, we're looking at about a $2.2 million project in total. Project's financed by a combination of city funds. This Shorewood Drive is part of our municipal state aid system, so we can use some MSA dollars for a portion of the project, and then, of course, some special assessments. So those assessments would be done in accordance with the city's special assessment policy and past practices. The short version of the story is a full-depth reclamation is split 50/50 between the city and the adjacent property owners. You can see the summary there on the table with the city picking up about just shy of 1.3 million of the $2.2 million project. And the reason that's not exactly a 50/50 is there's assessable footage along the project that simply can't be assessed. Wetlands, there's some city-owned property, things of that nature. So when we calculate those assessments and the assessment rates, we include that footage to keep that equitable for everybody, but ultimately, what we're doing by doing that is transferring some of that project cost onto the city itself. So again, quite a few wetlands and things like that that we're going along in other areas that we can't assess, and so that's why you see the discrepancy there in that cost split. So what we're doing when we're coming up with the assessment rate is we effectively look at all the assessable footage, which would even include those non-assessable areas. We include that footage for purposes of figuring out the assessment rate. Ultimately, that lowers the assessment rate when we include those areas. So we include all the assessable footage plus the non-assessable footage, divide the assessable amount to come up with an assessment rate. How we allocate those, this gets a little hairy, so bear with me. If you're an interior rectangular lot, your assessable footage is going to effectively be the width of your lot. If you're a relatively square interior lot, it's just the width of that lot. Corner lots, the policy does allow us to assess properties on two sides if you're a corner lot. So if the improvement was being done on both sides of your property, the front and the side, your assessable footage would be the width of that smaller side plus half of the length of the longer side up to 150 feet, and then anything over 150 on that long side. But you're only assessed for the side where there's an improvement made. So if it's just your long side that the improvement's done on, it's half that distance up to 150 feet plus anything over 150 feet. If you have an irregular-shaped lot, you know, a pie-shaped lot, we tend to try to assign an average width to those properties. And then another unique one, and we do have some of these on this project, is lots abutting two parallel streets. The assessment policy, as its road allows for the assessment of properties on both sides, if they have two parallel streets, a street in the front and a street in the back, they can be assessed if the lot is more than 150 feet in depth. So we do have some of those properties that have a street on one side and a parallel street on the backside that are more than 150 feet in depth. You know, I've talked to the city administrator. I think we'll have to look at some of those as we get into this further, assuming the project moves ahead. There may be some cases where we need to look at whether that is the right methodology or not, and ultimately bring that back to the city council for approval when we get to the actual assessment proceedings. So with that said, as it stands right now, and keep in mind, these are estimated numbers until we've gone out for bid, we're looking at an assessment rate of about $45 a foot. So if you had 50-foot-wide lot, 50 feet of assessable footage, you'd be looking at an assessment of about $2,250. 100-foot lot would be about $4,500. 150-foot lot would be closer to $6,700. As far as moving ahead in the assessment process.
Could you go back just one slide? I don't want to point that past, so I can't.
The cost slide, John. There you go. And I think just for the public's knowledge, Carrie, you put these, these presentations will be on the city's website, too, so you'll be able to look at those. So as far as assessment terms and conditions and where this moves ahead, if the project advances, there will be an assessment hearing either in the spring after we've taken bids or potentially it could be after construction this fall. There's some factors that we consider, whether we're going to hold that on the front end or the back end of construction, but we'll make that decision coming up here. And either way, properties that are proposed to be assessed will receive a written notice of the hearing along with a copy of your assessment worksheet that will have the actual assessment on there. And we hold that hearing, and property owners are free to come in and ask questions related to that assessment when we get to that point. So typically, the city levies these types of projects over a seven-year term. You have the option of coming in and prepaying those assessments, either in part or in its entirety, ultimately, just like any loan that would reduce interest charges. Otherwise, they'll just go on your taxes for the next seven years. So with that, turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, so the way we are going to do this tonight is I'll open it up for questions first and then comments. So if you have a question, now would be the time to ask, and we'll try to answer the question for you, and then I'll allow plenty of time for any comments you might have after that. Anyone have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
I happen to own some wetland property, probably 100 feet, and do I understand this? I will not have to pay that assessment?
Yeah, I'd want to look at it specifically, but generally speaking, if a portion of your property is wetland and undevelopable, we don't typically assess for that portion of the property that's not assessable.
And this would be across from my living.
Yeah, if it's a separate tract and it's not developable, we won't assess you for that. Correct?
If there are more questions, could I ask that you come up to the podium so that we can hear? It's pretty difficult to hear in here. So are there further questions? If not, I would open it up for any comments you might have, and again, I would ask that you come up to the podium. And if you do want to make a comment, we'd like to have your name and address for our minutes, please. So if anyone wants to make any comments at this time. Yes, sir, come on up. And again, if we could get your name and address, please, thank you.
Jim Schultz, I'm at 1235 Shorewood Drive.
And Jim, if you could talk into the mic a little closer.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so bought the house back in, oh, 2011 at 1235 Shorewood. And I spent a good portion of that time with my two daughters, basically living as a moving, living traffic barrier, especially going from the hill down to Shorewood Drive. So I'm glad that, I guess I came here and I was going to basically speak to the report that I saw the notice on Friday because my wife had it buried in papers, and I probably would have gotten ahead of it if I would have seen it sooner. But I saw in the report about the parking and also some acknowledgement about input from residences about pedestrian traffic, bike traffic. And it kind of raised a question in my head when we're proposing parking on that stretch from, you know, primarily, I'm assuming for a business that requested a variance when they expanded their business, basically, in my opinion, acknowledging that they have enough parking. So I'm glad that you made the decision to take parking off of it. And I would have been asking myself and asked myself why we would be prioritizing that over pedestrian and bikes, and especially in that section, without making accommodations for pedestrians and bikes. And I acknowledge the scope of work with the reclamation doesn't really warrant expanding those services, you know, just a pavement reclamation. So I understand that, but I would just add that if we are considering something a little bit beyond reclamation, especially for that section, the Long Bridge Heights subdivision is a traffic producer for pedestrians and bikes. And my girls are getting old enough that they can kind of move about on their own, but it's still a fairly high pedestrian bike traffic up and down that hill. So if there is consideration to switch, you know, taking the parking out of it, but if we're adding curb and gutter to make some accommodations for pedestrians and bikes, especially up and down that hill, so that was my remaining comment.
Thank you. Any further comments at this time?
My name is Leon Sen. I'm at 504 Shorewood Drive. While I'm excited to see this reclamation project take place, I do have a small concern that if we're not factoring any bike traffic or sidewalk traffic, if we're going to end up doing stuff twice, for lack of better terms, or paying for things twice, I'm sure that's all been thought through, but it also, it's disruptive. You know, it's one street in and out of there, so if we got to tear down for two seasons, it does get to be disruptive. And I would like to find a way to widen things so that we could put sidewalks in or parking, especially on that curve by the tennis courts there, by the sandbar. There's a lot of people parking there that shouldn't be parking there. They park there to walk out to the sandbar. It's once-a-year type thing. It doesn't impact me, but it does impact the road. It gets to be very cluttered in there during certain holidays, especially the fourth. So I'd like to see if we can find a way to try and widen things and yet still accommodate sidewalks and bike traffic. Because I've got, I don't have kids, I have grandkids, and they're there, and I do have the same concerns. We've just been there three years, but traffic does move pretty quickly through there, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Well, hi, Dan. Good.
Dan Josephson, 1314 Bay Ridge Drive. I live on the corner of Shorewood Drive, but I actually access my property from Long Bridge Road or Bay Ridge Drive. Here with a few of my neighbors, we do have concerns about the parking situation on the north side of Shorewood Drive going up the hill, and hopefully you guys do take that off the table because of, you know, going back to 2015 in July, there was a meeting here that we, as the city council, decided that Long Bridge didn't need to have four parking spots. And three years ago, at the March meeting, two parking spots, there was a variance for that, and we approved that as a city council. So six spots that the Long Bridge Resort decided that they did not need, and the city granted those variances. So to put in parking on the north side of that road is not a good situation to do. I've got kids that have run through my yard. I'm sure Mr. Pratt has had his kids walk through my yard to get over to play in the streets of Long Bridge itself. So that's one of the concerns that we have. Also, I think Charlie's got one of those irregular lots that your excess off of Bay Ridge Drive and off of Shorewood Drive is on the backside of his property. I'm one of those situations where we've got parallel streets being hit twice now for property taxes. So I'm looking at probably, you know, 107 feet on the Shorewood Drive side of things, so we're looking at about $4,000 worth of assessment. And Bay Ridge Drive is 20, 25 years old, so will be hit again for Bay Ridge Drive when that comes through. So in addition to that, I've got some shrubs where I do acknowledge I moved into a neighborhood 19 years ago that has a business across the road. I intentionally left the shrubs in the way. I measured last night, they're 12 feet away from the existing shoulder of the road. So any more creeping to the north towards my property, it's going to take those shrubs and my privacy away, so just want to point those facts out and would appreciate solving the erosion problem. I support the project as a whole, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dan. Any further comments? Okay.
Charlie Lindberg, 1330 Bay Ridge Drive. I just want to make sure you hear everyone that's already been talking. That's why I stood up. I just want to make sure that you understand how the safety of any parking on that side would be terrible for that area. There's so many kids that go across there, parents that go across there, and if they have to worry about cars and looking around cars and things like that, it's not good for that area. So just would really want to make sure that you understand that. That also... That also, my, a lot of my bedrooms are on that corner. So if now if you're going to push cars back farther, closer to my, to my area, to my, to my bedrooms and to my house, don't think it's a good idea either. It can be a little loud over there. We know that because where we moved in, we tried to be as good a neighbors as possible. But to have parking on that north side, does no one but one, one, one section over there good, does nothing for our neighborhood and it would be a detriment to our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Just to reiterate the recommendation, I know Chairman Zeeman, it's going to be to not have any of the parking along there. So if there are no further comments, I'll close that public hearing. Last call. Okay, that public hearing is closed and I would entertain a motion. Chairman Zeeman?
Okay, the Public Works Committee did review this project at length last night.
Give it to the mic, we're on.
And we give consideration to approving resolutions authorizing the preparation of plans and sites for specification of Shorewood Drive street improvements without parking. I repeat, without parking and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for the Shorewood Drive street improvements. And as Ron outlined, we would not include any creation of any parking along the section that's close to Bay Ridge Drive. Is there a discussion by the council? Hearing none. I would call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming this evening and I'll give you just a minute to quietly leave the chambers before we resume our business. Chief Strand, if you could help folks. Okay, so we, at this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the Southwood Shore Estate Street and Utility Improvements. And again, I'll call on our city engineer, John Pratt.
Mayor, council, pretty much like the last hearing we just did, this one is for Southwood Shore Estates Phase One. This is a residential subdivision that's being proposed just off of Salt Shore Drive in the south end of the city. Again, this project would involve special assessments to the, to the developer and the proposed lots that are being created out there. So it's a state statute requirement. We'll go through some of the existing conditions, proposed improvements, costs, things like that. Project location, well, I got some stuff backwards here, but project development schedule. So this has been toiling on for quite some time. Prior to this year, there's been a lot of discussion surrounding the plat and annexation and things like that. At this point, a preliminary plat has been developed. The property has been annexed into the city. And so this spring, barring your decision tonight, we'd move into the final design, permitting and bidding. And then over the course of this next summer, we would get into the construction of the Existing conditions, it's an agricultural field currently, so there is no sewer and water or anything within the project limits. There is, however, sewer and water located along Salt Shore Drive to the north side of the proposed project as well as along 270th Avenue on the, on the east end of the project. We can access those for extensions into the, into the proposed subdivision. The plan right now would be to extend sanitary sewer from Salt Shore Drive in and along the proposed street that's contained in the preliminary plat. We'd have an eight-inch gravity sewer main and four-inch service laterals, pretty straightforward. Same is true with water main. We would extend that off of Salt Shore Drive into the subdivision with a combination of six and eight-inch water mains. And then we would install likely one-inch service laterals. Storm sewer and drainage, again, little unique here. Most of our subdivisions include what I would call a conventional storm sewer collection system. It's inlets and pipes that then collect and capture the water and convey it to, you know, one or a series of treatment basins. In this case, the developer has proposed something that's a little bit different. Essentially, we wouldn't have any typical curb and gutter. We would have a ribbon curb along the street, but all the water would run off the edge of the street and into some shallow infiltration swales. You can call them ditches if you'd like, but they're very shallow, about two feet in depth, very subtle, with the idea that you let the water come off of the road into those swales and infiltrate. The subgrade out there is highly pervious. It's beach sand, basically. So it's really optimum for infiltration practice like that. So that's the proposal for the storm sewer. Now that's for the stormwater collection and treatment. That also would require us to do a significant amount more site grading than what we would typically do with a project. Normally, we don't have to do a ton of site grading, but if you're trying to get the water to these locations, you need to have the street relatively flat. We'll have to grade the properties out so that all the water goes to the intended locations. And so all of that really drives the need for more site grading. So in some ways, you're trading out storm sewer and ponds for a whole bunch of site grading. With that, I know we're also going to need some, some additional fill probably in subsequent phases of the subdivision. So we might be able to stockpile some of that for future use. So I mentioned the street. That is incorrect. It's not 32 feet, it is 36 feet wide roadway, which is in line with all of our other subdivision roads at 36 feet wide. The difference being here, again, is we don't have that mountable curb and gutter. Rather, it's just a flat ribbon curb or a flat piece of concrete along the, the edge of the street. And then we've got those infiltration swales flanking the roadway. So that drives the need for either a little wider right-of-way or additional easements alongside the right-of-way in order to, to maintain control of those swales in perpetuity because that would be our stormwater treatment system for, for the area. Project costs, looking at about a $1.4 million project in total. Again, the street being the, the largest component of that. But note down here, and I'll explain why in a minute, that there's about $7,000 of actual storm sewer on the project, which is really just a couple of culverts that we need. And then that there's about $210,000 of site grading costs. So I mentioned, we're kind of switching one for the other in this case. Funding sources, projects of this nature are generally funded by and large by special assessments to the, to the developer and to the lots that are being constructed. This is all done in accordance with the city's special assessment policy. The, the only exception to that is that the Stormwater Utility Fund typically comes into play, and I'll explain that in a minute. So sewer and water, 100% of the sewer, water and water service lateral costs are assessed back to the property owner, to the development. The only exception would be is if we had oversized sewer and water mains in there for future service needs beyond the development. If there was any oversizing that's done, then we would pick that up. Right now, we're not predicting any of that. 100% of the street cost is assessed. Stormwater is assessed 50/50, meaning we assess 50% and the city assumes, the Stormwater Utility Fund assumes the remaining 50%. Site grading isn't actually addressed within our assessment policy. Generally speaking, we would look at that, I would say, as 100% assessable. However, we're proposing something a bit different or something that the council should consider. Like I mentioned, that we are effectively swapping more site grading costs in lieu of storm sewer. To some degree, it comes to reason that perhaps the site grading costs should be split 50/50 between the city and the developer since that site grading is really being done to address stormwater and drainage and stormwater treatment. So I haven't presented that this way in terms of the numbers, but that's been the discussion at Public Works. It's a, it's a reasonable argument or something that's certainly reasonable to consider. So I'll leave that up to the council to make that decision. But all that being said, again, if we follow the letter of the assessment policy, the city would only have about a $3,500 share in the entire development with the balance of the cost being nearly 1.4 or over $1.4 million being assessed to those lots. So again, if we looked at this under the context of what I'm suggesting, we would be shifting about $105,000 of that site grading cost over to the city. Allocation of the assessable costs, again, done by the special assessment policy generally for subdivisions. The way we do this is we do it on a, on a per each or per lot basis. We take each of the cost components divided by the number of lots that are available to come up with a cost per lot. That's what you see in this table here, all those different pieces. So again, leaving this as is right now with, with the development bearing the cost of the site grading, we'd be looking at special assessments to each lot of about $58,600. By contrast, if the council elects to share in that site grading cost, you would be knocking a little over 4,000, about $4,300 off of that site grading cost. And so we'd be dropping those assessments down to something below $55,000. Things relative to terms and conditions, developer prepayment policy. So projects, generally speaking, with 20, with 20 lots or more, it's a 50% prepayment, meaning the developer has to prepay 50% of those assessable costs before we will award a construction contract. Projects that are less than 20 lots, that drops down to a 25% prepayment. I mean, that's all done to incentivize phasing of projects and not, you know, doing 50-lot subdivisions at once, which obviously places more risk on the city. There's more capital outlay, things like that. I would suggest here, this particular phase is, would provide 24 lots, so technically it is over the 20-lot threshold. But I would suggest that we make a variance from our typical policy simply because the phase that's being proposed is logical. If we stop at 20 lots, it's really kind of an illogical place to stop. I mean, we'd just kind of stop a street. We'd have to construct a temporary turnaround or cul-de-sac and then later on come and finish just a little bit more of the street. It just doesn't make sense. It would make far more sense to finish that street out, even though it's 24 lots. I still think it's meeting the intent of that policy and the project is still being phased. Any event outside of that prepayment, then the developer is assessed for a maximum of 20 years after the project is completed. The developer can request a five-year deferral followed by a 15-year term if they would rather. So it's still even set being a 20-year overall, but they can get a five-year deferral with a 15-year term instead of just a straight 20-year term.
Turn it back to you, mayor.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions for our city staff regarding the preparation of the plans and specs for Southwood Shore's estate? Or any comments? Hearing none. That public hearing's closed. Ron?
Okay, and as our city engineer, Sir John Pratt, this is an unusual project and our Public Works Department did look at this project at length here last night. And so we're, we're going to be talking about taking, you know, our money that we'd normally use for stormwaters and we're going to shift those costs to go over to help with the self-work cost. And this motion will also include moving from the 20 lots we had down and move that to 24 lots with this motion here. So at this time, we'll give consideration to approving resolution authorizing the preparation plans, specification of Southwood Shore's Estate Street and the utility improvements. And as I said, that'll include the moving from 20 to 24 lots and also shifting the money that would use for stormwater to go ahead and be used for site work and ISO move.
Is there a second?
I'm not sure I understood what the motion was for, to be frank. Are we, are we doing the 105,000, like, because we talked about the different options with the 105,000 shifting and the, the couple of different options. I'm not entirely sure I followed what the ask was.
I believe, I don't want to put words in Alderman Zeeman's mouth, but I believe what he was suggesting was that we would proceed by participating in the site grading costs at that 50% threshold, just like stormwater. And also that we would allow a 25% prepayment for the 24 lots.
Okay.
And be, and be using the same, same amounts of dollars wise.
Correct.
And that's what you meant, right? Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Without objection by the council, I'd like to move to a couple of the Finance Committee agenda items. And if, Mike, if we could start with 7B and C, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have on Finance Committee met today and we have, we reviewed the financial statements and the independent accountant's audit report for DLCC. Now, we have Peter here, the executive director of the DLCC, but he's here to answer any questions necessary. But our Finance Committee reviewed it. We found the audit to be acceptable. They had a good year, stable numbers. And so I have consideration to accepting the DLCC's annual financial statements and the independent accountant audit report for year ended August 31, 2024. We reviewed and ISO move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Unless you have anything further to add, Peter, I'm just going to call the question on the audit.
On the audit?
I'm just going to call the question on the audit. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have item C here, and that's where Peter can come in and provide some insight. It's regarding the 25th Anniversary Capital Campaign for the DLCC. Didn't want to steal your thunder on the previous item, but.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. And I provided a handout to you. The first two pages of that are really some additional information about the DLCC this current fiscal year. We're halfway through the year and we continue to have a good, a good year in terms of utilization. So people in our community are using our facility and we're also, I think, using our resources as well. I wanted to call your attention, though, to the third page, which is a proposal to proceed with the 25th Anniversary Capital Campaign. And just a little bit of background information, beginning in December of this year, we'll begin the 25th year of the DLCC. Our actual 25th anniversary will be December of 2025. And that's, I, I just really want to applaud the folks that created the DLCC years ago, the vision that they had, because we, we have a community center that has really the breadth and depth of services that's unparalleled in the area. So they did a great job of create a mission and then helping to bring that to light. I did a little bit of sort of back of the napkin math and we are approaching 10 million visits to the community center. When, when you think about check-ins, people coming for events in the ballroom, coming for shows in the theater, coming for rec programs that we're offering, all those kinds of things adding up to about 10 million visits. So the facility has been well utilized, but with 10 million visits in 25 years, that also adds to wear and tear on the building and we're certainly feeling the effects of that. As, as the audit showed and as our financial statements show, our operating model, about 80% of our revenue comes from ticket sales, memberships, earned revenue, about 20% from contributed revenue, including grants, fundraising, city support, and some money for capital, but not enough money to really adequately fund depreciation and prepare us to take care of more major improvements. And if you think about all of the major things that have happened in the community center over the years, from the, from its initial building to the building of the backyard to our large HVAC plant that we did in 2018, to our recent ballroom innovations, they all required either debt or fundraising. And we are at a point now, so we're proposing a 25th, 25th Anniversary Campaign to address some infrastructure issues. We've done a lot to our building, I think, to keep it looking good on the outside, but underneath the hood is some growing challenges. And a few that I call out, our pool, for example, the, the deck of the pool needs to be replaced, the mechanical rooms in terms of the filtration systems, boilers, those types of things is in need of a replacement at significant cost. boilers, those types of things is in need of a replacement at significant cost. Our fieldhouse floor, again, is functional, but it's beginning to wear out. And when you drop a ball on it in certain spots, the ball isn't bouncing back up. And so we're in need of replacing the fieldhouse floor sometime over the next few years, along with some other amenities there. Other parts of building infrastructure, including elevator controls, fire panel, we've done with your help, the flat roofs on the facility, but we will likely need to do the fieldhouse roofs, some equipment enhancements so that we can continue to attract members, aesthetics improvements, and then finally a capital maintenance fund. So when we add all that up, and I've been getting cost estimates on the various components, also getting input from members and staff, we're looking at, we're launching a capital campaign of about, with a goal of $2.5 million. We're fortunate, the city, through our management agreement, there are additional dollars coming to the community center over the next four years, and we would use that money. So we're not asking for any new money, but just to use that city's portion of $500,000 and then raise an additional $2 million. I've been in the process then of beginning to talk about this vision and engage some of our potential donors and stakeholders, and getting very positive feedback about that. Our management agreement does require the council to, that you approve items in excess of $50,000. And so we're bringing this forward to ask for your approval and also your support for us to move forward with our capital campaign, and then also prepare to celebrate with us with our 25th anniversary coming up.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Any questions for Peter? Otherwise, Mike, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. We have a consideration to approving a 25th anniversary capital campaign for the DLCC. Finance committee discussed, and I so move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 25th, 25th anniversary capital campaign for the DLCC. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Peter, and we look forward to the campaign. Also, Mike, if we could take the Minnesota Flyers, there's two items on the agenda as well.
Kind of three, but we'll, so we'll start with 7D, consideration to approving a management program services contract with Minnesota Flyers. We have Beth here as well to answer any questions. But basically, this is a management agreement between the Flyers and the city, and they requested that the contract be extended for at least seven years, which meets their, one of their financing requirements with possibly using new market tax credits. So that was how it was presented today. So finance committee discussed and recommends for approval, so, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a management and program services contract with the Minnesota Flyers. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So we also have item 7E, excuse me, consideration to approving the request from the Minnesota Flyers for food and beverage tax funding for the parking lot. I'll have Kelsey do a better job of explaining this one. Thanks.
Mayor and council, Minnesota Flyers has requested the city use its food and beverage tax dollars to pay for some of the paving that's associated with the project. You should have a handout from driveway service for a cost of $42,000 for doing some paving in front of the expansion at Minnesota Flyers. So I believe the discussion at the finance committee was to approve using food and beverage tax funds to cover this cost. And then we also talked about some additional paving that will come next month with a revised cost for that additional paving.
Thank you. So yeah, so finance committee discussed the bid that was proposed at $42,000 for the area that was covered. But yeah, we did also discuss getting some additional bids in on some areas surrounding that. So we have item 7E, consideration to approving the request from the Minnesota Flyers for food and beverage tax funding for the parking lot, and we recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request for the Minnesota Flyers for utilization of food and beverage tax funding for the parking lot improvements. Discussion on the motion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Kelsey, you mentioned additional bids. So we're not getting a revision of this bid. This is final. We vote, and we're good to go. You're talking about other areas of the parking lot.
Additional paving, correct.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. Thank you.
Further discussion.
And is the question, is the, what we're voting on is, is this portion of the parking lot or all of the parking lot in addition to the other bids that will come in?
You're voting on disapproving this $42,000 for tonight.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So we also have 7F, and that's related to the property. We have consideration to accepting quotes for the demolition of the old food pantry building and awarding the contract to Haug. So contracts were received, and Haug came in at a bid of $23,675. And they will have the property, or the building removed by the end of May, and maybe a request to try to move it up if possible because of the good weather and maybe the Flyers can get an earlier start. So but we have, the finance committee discussed the quote, found it to be acceptable, and I so move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the quote for the demolition of the old food pantry building and awarding the contract to Haug Incorporated. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Is there any, I know Lynn is here and wants to have a few minutes regarding some issues down in the park. But before that, is there anyone else that has an item that they would like adjusted on the agenda? The rest of you are just watching Good Government in Action, right?
[laughing]
Okay. So Lynn, because you're not on the agenda, I'm only going to give you just a few minutes to address the council. So if you could keep your remarks brief, I would appreciate it. And if you'd come to the podium and introduce yourself and your address.
Absolutely.
And to make sure you're talking to the mic, Lynn, so we can all hear you.
I'll make sure of it.
All right.
How's that?
That's good.
Hi, my name is Lynn Schulberg. I live at 326 Parkview Street. I'm a community member, and I live in the area of the city park. I was here back in July of 2023, and I'm disappointed to be back again for the same issue, illegal activity happening in the city park. We're asking you again, and we've asked before, and I know emails have been sent to some of you, and I know phone calls have been made. We've asked, we've discussed, we were looking forward to something being done. Everything we asked for, or we even talked about, zero happened. Zero. Now, with that said, there was officers given overtime to sit in the park. That happened, I think, for two months. That wasn't sustainable. City Council knew it wasn't going to be sustainable. I knew it wasn't going to be sustainable, and the officers knew it wasn't going to be sustainable. The activity, the illegal activity has continued. Safety for the public, safety for people visiting the park. These are not just nuisance calls. If you're waiting for something again to happen, time is running out. There have been weapons calls, domestics, fights, reckless driving, speeding, garbage dumping, targeted harassment. I even quit calling, and I was still targeted. My neighbor was recently targeted. It was, I know some of you have already heard this. You saw the video. That person could not be charged for what he did, or she did, because, that's my understanding, because we couldn't see the driver. It was targeted. Gentleman got home to have lunch, and a person did what he did. It was harassment, it was targeted, and it was illegal. And huge safety concern for the rest of the community, not just me and Elizabeth. Everyone in that community area, I have knocked on doors, and I've told you this before. They're not coming forward, they're not making phone calls anymore. Like I said, I quit making phone calls. I thought, gosh, all right, I'll let you guys handle it. I'm looking forward to a better result. Zero. And the impression that Michelle, or excuse me, that Elizabeth and I are getting, it's just them, no big deal. That's my frame of reference. Actually, one of the members of the community that decided not to call in anymore started videotaping. And I asked him for that videotape, and he apologized because he didn't hit the record button. But he got to the point the other day of safety issues for the community. Again, they don't call, they're afraid of retaliation. The offenders that are there are juveniles and adults. Your offenders during the day can be different than your offenders at night. I've seen a drug deal, or two. I sat there at the park in my car, and I flashed my brights, and they scattered like roaches. I sat there, and some kids took all their garbage and dumped it out of their car. My lights were on, and I watched them do it. I got out of my vehicle. I requested, as a mother would, to have them pick it up. They laughed at me. I said, I'm calling the police. They picked it up. The garbage is incredible. Bottles, alcohol bottles, vapes, whatever's there. I don't think it's there anymore because I believe the city has picked that portion up. I had even a mother of two tell me, you live by the park, what do you expect? I expect better. Rendered me speechless, I didn't say that. I had another person say to me, I've lived here all my life. I did the same thing. I hung out, I hung out at the park, okay? 30, 40 years ago, people were different. Society was different. Things have changed. There's no respect for law enforcement. There's no respect for safety. There's no respect for the environment over there. There's no respect for our safety. This is a safety issue. Speeding, reckless driving. I've been followed. I've been honked at a group of kids. I walked outside of my home just to do a chore, and a group of kids, and I hadn't been calling for a while, stopped, honked their horn, yelled obscenities at me, rev their engine, and I've been told, hey, Lynn, don't react. Got it. I didn't. They kept doing it until I walked into my house. It's uncomfortable. It's unsafe with their driving habits. Exhibition driving. And then I thought we were going to have additional cameras put up. That's really what we discussed wholeheartedly. We even discussed it again last night. But almost two years ago, we discussed that. There have not been any cameras put up. Now, the cameras that are there are for property safety. They don't, they do not help with the situation that's at that park right now. In this almost two-year span, I asked, were there any cameras put up anywhere else? Yep, at other parks, for building security, not for public safety. This is a community issue. Something's going to happen. Again, my name is Lynn Schulberg. I'm a 911 dispatcher communications training officer. My last training was active violence. My training before that is active shooter. I also train dispatchers. We train in case something happens, when we hope to God nothing does. But if you're waiting for this to happen, something's going to happen. It has in the past. Why wasn't there anything done? I don't understand. We came to you for help. I know it's not going to be 100% taken care of. I get it. But we came to you for help over a year and a half ago, and I know Elizabeth has been emailing, making phone calls, and I started calling again. The other day, I was followed because I have pissed a lot of people off. I have been targeted, and it's getting very uncomfortable. And again, it's not just me. It's the whole community, because then they're going to move somewhere else, and we all discussed this. Then they're going to move somebody else, somewhere else. Lincoln Avenue, it's about a quarter mile long. When they see me coming, they take off. 25 houses up that way, a park, tennis courts, and they're speeding. And it's amazing. It's amazing, and they have no, I don't know what it is, not even respect. They have, there's no accountability. There's no accountability. I am not responsible for their behavior because I'm calling in. Because if I was responsible, they wouldn't be doing it.
Okay, Lynn, you're going to have to wrap things up if you would.
Perfect. I will.
Okay.
I will.
And I will refer this back to our public safety committee.
Okay.
For further review, so.
To where? I'm sorry.
The public safety committee of the city.
I talked to them last night about it.
Well, that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
And I'm glad you did, but that's what I'm going to do tonight.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Again, we came up with a lot of different ideas. I, it's not just a park issue. It is a community issue. And the thing is, what if it were your family? Or what if this was happening to you?
Okay, Lynn, thank you.
You, any questions, let me know.
All right. We'll move back to the regular agenda, and I believe we are on the community development committee agenda. Chairwoman Spry, do you want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you. Item 5A is an update on the 270th Avenue annexation, and I don't know if Charlie or Kelsey would like to take that and just share with the entire council.
Mayor and council, I think my best summary would be, we're continuing kind of discussions with the property owner and with the township. I think we've kind of reached a tentative agreement. If all goes well, we'll have this on the agenda in April for approval, and it also goes to the township also in April for approval, hopefully. Is that correct, Charlie?
That's the hope and the discussion that we've been having with the township and their attorneys, so.
Okay, so no action tonight, correct?
No action, just an update.
Okay.
Thank you. Item 5B, consideration to a resolution approving a variance to allow a zero-foot parking lot setback on the property at 13 Highland Drive. And Larry, if you want to.
This is a variance request for Highland Estates. The project has changed on that property, and they need a variance to have a parking lot that's a zero setback instead of the five-foot setback from the Lemon Road right-of-way in order to shift the building five feet to the north to get it out of a utility easement.
Thank you. The community development committee reviewed this at length last night at our meeting and recommend approval. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a variance to allow a zero-foot parking lot setback from Lemon Road, 1321 Highland Drive. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item 5C, consideration to a resolution continuing city support for cooperative agreement with Becker County for the DMRA, and I will let city staff review that with us.
DMRA is looking at updating their master plan, and they want to submit that to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission so that it's on file with them. So whenever the city would apply for funding for DMRA, they have the new master plan in place. Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails has asked that the city and county pass a resolution of continuing support for a 20-year agreement that they've entered into for improvements to Mountain View and Detroit Mountain Recreation Area. I'm not entirely sure what that does for them, since the 20-year agreement is in place and we aren't going to violate our agreement. But it doesn't change the agreement. It doesn't change the terms of the agreement or the length of the agreement. And since they are the funder and we want to do what makes them happy, I think it would be a good idea to pass this resolution of continuing support, which we have to continue to support anyway. So.
All right. So our committee did review this last night, and we recommend that the council approve. council approve, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution continuing city support for the cooperative agreement with Becker County to develop and implement recreational and facility improvements at DMRA. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else on the Community Development Committee agenda, Wendy?
That is it.
That's it, okay. Then we'll move to the Public Works Committee. Chairman Zeeman.
Okay. Last night at our Public Works meeting, we had discussion regarding Minnesota state flag. Our old Minnesota state flag was adopted by Minnesota Legislature in 1957. The old flag with the state seal in the center was retired by the state of Minnesota on Saturday, May 11, 2024. At that time, the old flag will no longer be, will no longer fly over Minnesota official government buildings. The old flag was replaced with a new state flag bearing the shape of Minnesota with an eight-point North Star field and also a field of light blue representing Minnesota's waters. The new flag is now flying over all Minnesota state official government buildings and in all Minnesota courthouses. At this time, the new flag is only required to fly over outside official Minnesota state government offices and government courtrooms. Local government offices are not required to fly the new flag, as many cities and counties have not made the switch to the new flag as of now throughout the state. So whether cities and counties opt to fly the new flag is up in air for now, and it leaves up to each city and county to decide which flag to use in their cities and counties' locations. As you know, Becker County is flying, devoted to fly the old flag. We've had many discussions. I've had people ask me because of Public Works, and also have asked Kelsey what we should do this, so I think we should make a decision which way we want to go on this. So I'm going to start by going ahead, and I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and we fly the new flags here at Detroit Lakes City Facilities.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to display the new Minnesota state flag. Is that what your motion is?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, this motion's been made and seconded before I call the question, certainly would open it up for any discussion by the council.
I would just, I don't know if I can amend that motion, but I would suggest rather than using the word "new," that we, that the terminology is the official.
Are you okay?
You know what I mean?
Is the motion and second are okay with that change?
Fine, yes.
Okay. Any further comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to do a roll call because it sounded kind of close. Craig?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Ron?
No.
Jackie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Jay?
No.
Well, I guess it wasn't that close, but my hearing's not that good anymore either. The motion carries. Okay, Ron.
Okay, we all, also at this time, we have had discussion regarding parking around Manafu Co-op, and I'm going to have Kelsey just give a little update on that.
Mayor and council, we had a request from Manafu Co-op to consider some sort of limited parking near their location. They tend to see a lot of long-term parking in their area. We didn't have a representative come to the Public Works meeting, so we'll just reserve this for next month if they're able to come to the meeting.
Okay, with that, we'll see what comes forward on that. I would like to say that that discussion on that area has been ongoing for a long time about employees' parking, and it's a typical history of that, of that area down there with parking. Ace Hardware for years was always at our meetings in regards to that, and looks like that discussion's continuing now with the Manafu Co-op. Let's go to item C here, consideration to approving the organic material recycling collection of the city of Detroit Lakes. As you remember, last month, Steve Skug and Eric DeVries came, and they talked to us a little bit about recycling food from your home that you don't finish up using leftovers at restaurants and so forth, and they're going to start a new food waste landfill collection area throughout town. And the idea is to go ahead and take that and then make it into recyclables. And we had a month to review this, and the committee reviewed this yesterday, and we go ahead and move to try this project for one year and see how it works out after year, and if it works out after year, to go ahead and accept it for further long range for recycling. So at this time, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and go ahead with the recycling program. It's a new program, and we'll see how it works out, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the organic material recycling collection in the city of Detroit Lakes. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item D, consideration resolution accepting reports and setting a public hearing on the approvals of concrete, patuminous curbs, gutters, approaches, and sidewalks for the April 28, 2025. I'm going to call on Sean King to give us an update on that.
Mayor and council, this is just the same hearing we do every year for the concrete, patuminous, and curb and gutter repair that we have throughout the city. We mark it every fall, bring it forward in the spring for the summer construction.
Okay, the committee goes ahead to approve this, and I so move.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to accept the report and set the public hearing on the improvements of concrete, patuminous curbs, gutters, approaches, and sidewalks, and that would be for April 8, 2025, which is our regular city council meeting. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item E has been removed by the request of the person that submitted it. Going to item F, consideration to a special event application for Historic Homes Theater for trucks, tunes from June 5 through the 28, 2025. Kelsey, want to give us a little update on that?
Mayor and council, the reason why we didn't have it on the consent agenda was, part of the request was to have the pavilion as a backup for those Thursday nights. The consensus of the committee was to allow them to use the pavilion as a backup for rain events without charge, granted that it's available, so we're not going to take those dates off the books. So if we can find someone to book it, we'll do so, but if it's available, they can use it free of charge.
Okay, and the, as I said, the committee reviewed this, and with the exception if it does rain, if the pavilion's open to use, fine, but if somebody's used it, they'll have to find some other spot for it, but the committee recommends an ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a special event application for the Historic Homes Theater to have the trucks and tunes down in the city park and the use of the pavilion if necessary. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item G, consideration to accept quotes for the DMRA mountain bike trail in awarding the contract. We'll call on John Frant.
Mayor and council, this is a part, or a small part of the overall legacy grant improvement projects that's being completed out at DMRA. There's a memo in your packet, this is related specifically to the construction of some additional downhill single-track mountain bike trails out at DMRA. The threshold was such that we didn't have to go out and formally advertise for bids, but rather just receive quotes. We received two quotes, one from Progressive Trail Design, the other from Pathfinder Trail Building, and the low quote was received from Pathfinder in the amount of $142,000. Again, this will be funded by a portion of the legacy grant proceeds out at DMRA.
Okay, the committee reviewed this, and we made approval to go ahead and approve Pathfinder's $142,000 to do this project, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the quotes for the DMRA mountain bike trail and award the contract. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item H, consideration to resolution offering improvements and approving plans and specifications and ordering advertised for bids for Forest Street improvements or projects. I'm calling John to give us an update on that.
Yeah, Mayor and council, a number of months back, the council authorized preparation of plans and specs for Forest Street. We've got those to a point that they're pretty close, not quite done, but pretty close to complete. We'll be sending those into MINDOT for review and approval here in the coming week or two, and just asking the council for formal approval of the plans and authorization to bid, so we can get that project out to bid probably prior to the next council meeting, which is why I'm asking for the approval right now.
Okay, the committee reviewed this, we authorized approval and authority for the bid of this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to order the improvements and approved plans and specs for the advertisement of bids for the Forest Street Improvement Project. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, next item is to have John give us an update for the city engineer monthly report.
All right, Mayor and council, I acknowledge I've used my allotted time for tonight. Do have some activity on various projects, the report's included in your packet, nothing really to cover the first couple items. We talked a little bit about Southwood Shore Estates project tonight, moving that project into design for construction yet this summer. Water tower project, the contractor's been working on that project fairly consistently throughout the winter months here. The piles are in the ground, those have been filled, they got the riser pipe in, and they're starting to place all the steel reinforcement for the pile cap foundation. They plan to pour that next week. So where that leads us is probably over the course of the next month or so, we're going to start to see the vertical construction happening on the concrete column, so some things happening up there. Nothing to report on the Heartland State Trail project just yet, we just approved Forest Street, going out to bids on that. Westlake Drive Phase 3, plenty going on with that project. I know a number of the council were at the public input meeting that we had last Tuesday, I think it was, here in the city council chambers. By my measure, it was very successful from the standpoint, we had right around 125 people show up for that, so it was very well-attended for really the duration of the two hours that we had the open house. In addition to that, we've got online access to just about all the same information, we've had good traffic, we're able to track that, we've had good traffic on the website, we've had good responses both on the online survey and the written surveys from the open house that evening. I'd still encourage people, if they haven't, to go to the city's website. Again, all that information, there's interactive maps, all the presentation boards, presentations, there's tons of information out there, and there still is, the survey is still open online, so encourage people to go and voice their opinion of what they like or don't like with those proposed improvements. So really, the next step here is going to be to finalize the scope of everything and move that project ahead so that we can get design wrapped up later this year, get all of our approvals, and get that project bid probably prior to the end of this year so that we're ready to go for the summer of '26. DMRA, we just mentioned that. That hopefully, I think, is the last piece of that puzzle in terms of bidding, and now it's just a matter of, over the course of this summer, to get all those various improvements built out there. We've got this summer to get that done and a little bit of the following summer. Shore Drive, we had our hearing on that, don't need to mention anything more. One new item I did put on here is related to a cooperative study with MINDOT and Burlington Township, looking at the intersections of, on Highway 10 East at East Shore Drive and 290th, so this would be just west of the new Kubota dealership, if you're familiar with that area. There's some strange things with approaches and short-turn lanes and things like that that create some problems. We had a fatality out there last year, and so we're working with MINDOT and looking at different options of how to improve that and improve the safety and functionality of all that. So I think right now, the plan is to probably have some form of public engagement or open house related to those improvements towards the end of this summer, so. Any questions?
Any questions for John? If not, Ron?
Motion to go ahead and accept John's engineering report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the city engineer's monthly project status report. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any other items?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move to the Finance Committee, which I believe there's still a few items.
Yes, a few remaining. We have item 7A, Apple Tree Dental came to the Finance Committee earlier today, and they presented a possible, they're possibly looking to lease the Public Works Facility Office Building, the old Public Works Facility Office Building, kind of a key thing. And so there were some preliminary numbers thrown out at the Finance Committee. They provide dental work for underserved, you know, people in the community and do a wonderful job, so. So the hope is that they would come back next month with something more formalized and working with Kelsey on that.
Okay.
So no action on that one. Item 7G, we have a consideration to approving the 25, 26 DMRA rates for their downhill skiing and tubing. They are hoping to bump up their daily rates a few bucks each to generate some additional revenues, but within a reasonable amount, and kind of keep them in line with the higher rates within, you know, in other ski resorts within the area. So Finance Committee reviewed the proposed rates, and we recommend for approval, and I so move.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 2025, 2026 Detroit Mountain Recreation Area rates. Discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to mention that the director of the DMRA mentioned that they've had a very good winter out there. Our snow has been sporadic this year, but it snowed at the right time, and so they've, they're pleased with the business they've had. I've masked that all the time, how are they doing? So the report is that they've done well.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We also have item 7H, consideration to the request from Becker County for funding for a trail study. Kelsey gave us a little bit of an update. This is for some proposed trail work outside but near the city limits, and so there's still some additional work being done at the county level on this one, so we're going to just table it for the month.
Okay. Anything further on finance?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move to the Public Safety Committee. Chairman Dolman?
Your Honor?
You got nothing?
Nope. Just said it's dry out there and red flag warnings. Had some snow this weekend, but watch your campfires. Mr. Strand back there, everything's going good, right, sir? Okay, we're good.
Thanks, Chiefs, thank you. Yeah, it's been pretty quiet from you tonight, Aaron. So with that, we will move to the Liquor and Gambling Control Committee and move back to Chairman Sterns.
So we have a few items on this one. The first one is item 9A, consideration to the request from Downtown Alive to support or to sponsor the downtown floral baskets for the 2025 year. Over the last few years, liquor and gambling, or the liquor fund has paid about $4,000 towards the sponsorship, and Liquor and Gambling Control Committee discussed it, and once again, we are recommending $4,000 for that cause, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a $4,000 contribution to Downtown Alive to sponsor, help sponsor the downtown floral baskets for this summer. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, we have a couple of extra ones added on after the fact. Item 9G, the Detroit Lakes J.C.'s have a couple of additional requests that came in a little later, and they're for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license. Item 9G is for the Kent Freeman Arena on April 4. Liquor and Gambling Control Committee reviewed, and I recommend for approval, and I so move.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a liquor license for the J.C.'s for the Kent Freeman Arena. Discussion?
I just have a question, what's the event? Am I missing?
I could not find it.
Just having an old... Just having an old-fashioned kegger.
[laughing]
Alright.
Craft beer tour on April fourth, thank you.
It's the what?
Craft.
We have some, we have some J.C.'s to-
I was close.
Alright, and, uh-
So, all in fa- all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Alright, we have item nine H as well, uh, and you folks can maybe help me out on the day, on what this one is, on April twelfth. Uh, it's also for a one-to-four-day, uh, temporary on-sale liquor license.
Yeah, that's gonna be the armory for our gun bingo.
Awesome, there we go. Uh, uh, Liquor and Gambling Control Committee, uh, discussed the request, uh, we recommend approval and I so move.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a request from the J.C.'s for a liquor license for the armory. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that, is that it for the liquor?
That's it.
But you've also got some public utilities stuff, you could've been the star of the show tonight, Mike.
I drew the str- short straw on the Finance Committee, so I got an extra one to throw in. Um, so, uh, Public Utilities Commission met this morning and we actually have a few items for, um, council today. One is, uh, discussion regarding the sale of property adjacent to the water tower. Um, I'll give a little, quick little summary, there is a, there is a house that is, um, the, the owner's considering selling and there is, uh, a strip of land when they had their land, a property surveyed or when they realized that their, uh, house was kind of on city land or a public utilities land, and so, uh, there's been a negotiation to have a parcel of land sold, uh, to the current homeowner so they can sell their house with no restrictions, so, uh, Public Utilities Commission, uh, discussed the, uh, reviewed it this morning, uh, we, uh, we recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the sale of a piece of property adjacent to the water tower. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we have item ten B, consideration to a resolution accepting grant navigator funding. Uh, this is a, uh, source created by the League of Minnesota Cities and, uh, Rob Bretisson, uh, from the, uh, Public Utilities, uh, the water, uh, part, you think I would have the term set right, uh, Rob, uh, applied for a grant to help in planning for PFAS testing and evaluation of the water, uh, the waste stream, and, uh, he was a, he was, uh, because of his grant being submitted, uh, the, the Public Utilities was awarded a ten thousand dollar grant. Um, so, we just have the luxury of accepting that grant, uh, Public Utilities discussed, uh, we recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept a grant navigator funding, an amount of ten thousand dollars, the Public Utilities. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, the next one has a little more, uh, technical jargon in it, but, uh, consideration to accepting bids for a fifteen-kV switchgear for industrial sub and awarding the contract to Harold Case Schultz Company. Um, there were, uh, three bids received on, on this, uh, this request, uh, RFP, and they ranged from about seven hundred and ninety-five thousand to about a million twenty-thousand, twenty-one thousand. So, uh, the review was completed, uh, by, uh, was it DGR, which is an engineering firm, that, uh, they, that, and they said the recommendation was that we accept the bid from, for seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, as they're a known company. So, uh, Public Utilities, uh, discussed that this morning, uh, and recommends approval and I so move.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept a bid for a fifteen-k volt switchgear for the industrial sub and awarding the contract to the Harold Schultz Company. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So, item ten D, uh, the, we, there are, this is a consideration to accepting bids for two old buildings on industrial sub-site. So, for that's, for the site that's, uh, going to hold the new industrial sub-site, uh, there are two old buildings on the property and so there were bids, um, you know, there were bids received that were, uh, the contractors are going to remove the buildings under the terms described in the request for proposals, and, uh, two bids were received, one for twenty dollars on the smaller building, uh, the second one was one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars on the second building, the larger building. Um, you know, I guess it sure beats us having to pay for the, uh, demolition and removal though, uh, so, uh, Public Utilities, uh, discussed accepting the bids as proposed, uh, they are going to be removed on, in a timely manner, uh, so we discussed the bids as proposed and I so move.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept bids for the removal of two old buildings at the industrial sub-site. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And with that, is there any additional city administration items, Kelsey, that you're aware of that should be brought forth?
Mayor, I do not have anything else.
Okay, any of the other city staff? Um, I'm still looking for someone to serve on the Arts and Culture Commission, if you've got any candidates, you can let me know on that. I do want to recommend the reappointment of Jesse Kruger to the Tourism Bureau, and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Jesse Kruger to another term in the Tourism Bureau. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Becker County assessors notified the city that the board review for the twenty-twenty-five assessments will be held on April twenty-fifth at nine thirty a.m., and we have Alderman Zeeman, Alderman Bokey and myself are all certified, and so I would, uh, like to appoint those three to the, we, it's three that we need, Carrie, right? Okay, I'd like to appoint those three. I don't need a motion, do I? I'll, I'll do a motion.
Second.
So move.
No, I, I can't do it.
So, so move.
Second. Somebody'll get it.
I tried. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint, uh, Alderman Zeeman, Alderman Bokey and myself to the, uh, border review. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The joint governance meeting dates are listed and the balance of the twenty-twenty-five city council meetings are also listed. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything further? I don't think there is.